Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call the Missoula City Council Meeting of September 18th, 2017 to order. If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. And please let the record note, with the exception of Ms. Headall and Ms. Bentley, all council members are present. We do not have minutes to approve this evening. We do have a committee schedule, however. Ms. Raybine.
Thanks, and it's a short schedule, folks. The Budget Committee will be meeting this coming Wednesday on the 20th from 1:40 to 1:50. The Public Works Committee will meet from 1:55 to 3:25, and Landy's and Planning will follow from 3:30 to 5 o'clock. All those meetings are being held right here in the City Council Chambers, 1:40 West Pine.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Any changes to the committee schedule this evening? Seeing none of those, we'll move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on the agenda this evening.
Jesse Ramos, Whittaker Drive, Missoula citizen. It has come to my attention that the resolution for $184 million of total appropriations voted on by the City Council on July 24th and publicly commented on by nearly 20 citizens is no longer accurate. According to this resolution, found on the website, right here, found this on the website, the correction that has been addressed has been the total appropriations are now $209 million. That is $25 million of funds that were not approved by the members of the City Council and the public was not notified. Upon persistent inquiry, I received a call from a Gallinier office, Mr. Mayor, and, well, geez, lost my place, from Gallinier office, explaining that this was due to an increase in enterprise funds, which we all know means more money for the water company. This is an entirely different subject that I will comment on at a different time. The problem today is that there's a large disconnect between what was voted on and what is currently being enacted. On behalf of myself and all Missoula citizens, I want to know, I want the 13 elected officials up here to know how closely you're being watched and how closely these matters are being monitored by the citizens because we really do care. That being said, please explain this enormous change to the public. Your employee only called me and told me this vague information upon request and persistence. I believe that this is the job of the mayor and the City Council to inform the public voluntarily, not one prompted. Your employee wasn't elected by the people of Missoula, however, every single one of you was, and I believe you owe the citizens of Missoula an explanation. Because, Mr. Mayor, in the financial services world, $25 million is an Enron-level accounting error. No wonder so many council members feel uncomfortable at times during the Budget Committee meeting. I look forward to hearing your explanation, as I'm sure the entire city of Missoula does. Many citizens took time out of their night to come to the Missoula City Council meeting to voice their opinion on the excessive spending of the city, and we stayed out until the late hours of the night when you all unanimously approved this budget for $185 million. Was that all just for show, or will there be another vote? Why didn't you, why didn't you just vote on 209 million instead of 185 million? I'd just like to have some of these questions answered. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Crystal Miller, and this is, I am obliged, as an active member of this community, to compel the council to assemble on a principal resolution to Senate Bill 261. I have sent an email that has been sent to all of you to reconvene the legislature for a reallocation of budget cuts made in this bill. 8.9% of residents in Missoula County are living with severe mental and physical disorders, and the population of Missoula County isn't that, that high, so that's actually a large percentage, especially in Missoula itself. Case management field is primary example in that proposition, and with 44% in, in their, in their cuts, based on the 3.47 in Medicaid cuts. For this to persist over the next two years suggests increased strain on city budget. Recovery and support of these members in our community is key to many varying services and programs, including police force and hospitals. I'm representing a group of members in the community in hopes our city maintains its positive growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Excuse me, my name is Bob Moore. To the previous gentleman, I wish him any luck in trying to get information from the City Council. I basically have very little. For example, several months ago, I asked that the, I think it was directing it to the mayor, to show us how much money had actually been put into the city coffers as a result of TIF financing. That was, I don't remember now, four, five months ago. I still haven't gotten the report. It was a reasonable request, and I'll bet you $100 that the director has got that number in her mind. So it's a reasonable request to see how much money, as a result of TIF financing, has gone into the city coffers, meaning the tax dollars is going to be spent on police, the schools, repairing roads, different things of that nature. Not giving it to another developer or a professional person is what you're doing. I'd like to remind you that California one time had over 400 of these districts. They shut them all down. If all the documents I've read on the internet and so forth are true, and I got no reason to believe they're not, the 400 were shut down because, basically, of corruption. Like, one of the big museums, and I've been there, I guess it was the Getty Museum, the, their TIF financing built a, a parking lot, parking garage beside of his big museum. Is that really what taxpayers' money should be doing? I don't think so. And I really would like to see the mayor and the City Council stop giving this money to developers and professionals. I attended the meeting on the Marriott Hotel. I asked the developer, would it be done if he didn't get a dime? And he said, yes, but it would be delayed. For my two cents worth, he can delay it for a month or two to get his financing back in order. For him to pay the three and a half million dollars, the taxpayer shouldn't be paying this three and a half million dollars. I don't see why y'all can't see that. The same oracle, I can't remember if I got through all these points or not, stopped me when I got three minutes. Tax increment financing, a bad bargain for taxpayers. First published by Reason Magazine, January 2006. The headings are, "A Crummy Way to Treat Taxpaying Citizens."
We'll hear more next week, Mr. Moore.
Okay, three, three minutes is up. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other general public comments this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Emma Wimmer. I'm a resident of Missoula, as well as a board member on the Bike Walk Alliance for Missoula. And last week, the council chose not to follow the city's complete streets policy and voted to remove the bike lanes from Linda Vista Boulevard. The City Council has the obligation to look toward the future, and this action risks and sets a precedent that has already created consequences. City staff has already been approached by the developer of the next phase of Miller Creek, Lloyd Twight, who requested that bike lanes that are required condition of his subdivision be removed, citing the council's recent unfortunate decision. We'd like to praise Jordan Hess and John DeBary for recognizing the value and importance of the complete streets policy, and that if we are to achieve our community goals, we have to look at every opportunity to forward them, not retreat from what is right when faced with opposition. And we should certainly not let developers skirt our policies to save a buck. It's ironic that tonight's meeting will include a proclamation about bike, or about Walk and Roll Week, considering the actions of the council last week. Our city's needs exist beyond the immediate, and our actions have a ripple effect. We encourage the council to continue following the complete streets guidelines and to ensure that equal access to infrastructure is something we continue to protect and maintain. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Excuse me. Anyone else this evening? All right, with that, we will move on to our consent agenda. Items on that agenda were approved unanimously in City Council committees, and we save a little time on Monday evenings by considering these items all at once. Ms. Raybine will read the list of consent agenda items aloud, so those in the audience and those at home will know what we're considering, and we'll take comment on these items before we vote. Ms. Raybine.
Hi, tonight's consent agenda has seven items, and I have a correction to number six. When we get to it, I'll point it out. Number one is to approve claims, which are the city's accounts payable in the amount of $1,343,007.55 for checks that are dated tomorrow, September 19th, 2017. Number two is to approve an agreement with Morrison &amp; Merrily Incorporated to prepare a wastewater facility plan for the city of Missoula for $285,100. Number three is to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Peter Drakos and Jean Schmitz to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board for terms commencing October 1st, 2017, and expiring on September 30th of 2020. Number four is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Ferris Design Incorporated for professional services that are related to the Community Bike Park Project in amounts not to exceed $23,766 for the design phase of Bike Skills Park project and $33,714 for construction phase of the project. And those are for bike parks in both Bellevue and Saranga Parks. Number five is to approve a memorandum of agreement between the city of Missoula, Trout Unlimited, and Montana Fish and Wildlife and Parks outlining the parties' individual and collective objectives, roles, and responsibilities associated with project planning for mitigating the effects of the Lower Rattlesnake Dam site and restoring Rattlesnake Creek. Number six, here's the one where we're going to hopefully do a correction here. The motion reads to set a public hearing on October 2nd, but the actual motion out of committee is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign this agreement. For, a criteria of this grant is that we take public comment on it. We do not need to hold a public hearing, and so the motion should read, approve and authorize the mayor to apply for and accept a grant award for the city of Missoula Police Department in the amount of $63,161 from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. It's called JAG affectionately, and this is JAG grant number 14. $15,749 of this grant will be passed through to Missoula County for use, for their use. And finally, number seven is to appoint Adam Stubbs to the alternate position on the design review board for a term that begins immediately and ends on December 31st of 2018.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Questions or comments from council members on the consent agenda? Mr. Von Laasberg.
I just wanted, I made the motion on number six in Public Safety and Health, and I just wanted to note for the record that the clerk, Ms. Raybine, corrected the motion correctly. That is indeed the motion I made in committee after the chief notified us that we didn't have to have a public hearing. It was just requiring public comment, which we took at the committee, and we will take again this evening.
Mr. DeBary?
I would just like to make a comment regarding item number two, which is the contract with Morrison &amp; Merrily. I know that it isn't a part of the scope of work right now to look at the boundary of the wastewater service area, but my hope is that there might be some excess capacity as we work through this to potentially have an opportunity to investigate the boundaries of our wastewater service area.
Further discussion? Anyone in the audience care to comment on any of the consent agenda items? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the consent agenda, as corrected, number, excuse me, Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Kares. Kares votes yes. DeBary. DeBary votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Marler. Marler votes yes. Swainy. Swainy votes yes. Von Laasberg. Von Laasberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. And Wilkins. Wilkins votes yes. So if you'd like to change your vote, that is ten eyes and two abs in.
And the consent agenda is approved. We'll move on to comments from city staff agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, and the community forum, and we have a number of reports this evening from our neighborhood councils, and we'll begin with Favous's Patty Canyon. Mr. Aitken.
Okay, and I hope each of us keep it short, so you'll be happy. We'll move on quickly as we can. So Whittaker Park, earlier this month, we had our meeting. We had about fifteen attend, 50 attendees, in spite of all the smoke and everything that was around, and first presentation was by the Five Valleys Land Trust about all the trail plans that you knew about, going on both the north and the south side of Dean Stone, and as she turned around the point, she said, oh yeah, you can't see it tonight, sorry. So we moved on, but it was a good, good questions were asked and a good understanding, I think, was reached. Chris Boza came, and we are advancing our tree plan for that area. He asked the attendees to do some dot voting on tree selection. We had honed it down to about 35, and we're trying to get it down to about 15 to 20 trees, and hopefully now the Tree Advisory Committee will go back and compile the results, and we'll come up with a good recommendation. And the last major thing was, we continue to be in a quandary about the Whittaker Park Forest Service Building, and the committee up there is recommending at this point that, since it has not been designated as a historic building on the registry, that maybe a lot of things are up for grabs, including the recommendation that we seek ways to either move the building or to have it demolished and replace it with a picnic shelter. We're seeking that, looking at recommendations. We have not gotten that far, but that's where things stand right now. It certainly is a building that merits thinking about as a historic building, but it's not been done. So, and the only really great thing I think that happened was that Kathy Nolan has volunteered to be a new member of our leadership team. Seattle was her previous residence, and she has done a lot with neighborhood councils there, so we're looking forward to having her on there. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine.
Any, oh, any questions? Nope, okay.
And next, Mr. Schatz with the River Road Report.
Thank you. I'm Nick Schatz with the River Road Neighborhood. We had our summer barbecue on the 13th of this month. We had between 50 and 60 people, which is a pretty good turnout. We had folks from Missoula Invest Health coming to speak with us. We talked with Ethan Smith about quality of life, life issues in Neighborhood Watch. We had a really good conversation with Brian Hansel about snow and leaf removal. We had question answers with the City Council members. Thanks, Michelle, for coming. It was awesome. We actually have three new people on our leadership team, which is really great. We've been struggling to get new members, so that was pretty cool. And all in all, I think, really great conversations. People were really engaged. All of our speakers went long because people kept asking the questions, which was cool to see. That's all I've got. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Lewis &amp; Clark Neighborhood Council. Ms. Connor.
Good evening, I'm Chris Saponner. This is my first meeting to attend here. I'm new to Missoula. I moved from Flathead down here. I was quite active there. So here we go. So patience. Jane Kelly is our coordinator, and she welcomed everybody to our barbecue. We had 46 people attend. We did a brief history of the, of the neighborhood council. Ethan Smith, officer for crime prevention, came and did his Neighborhood Watch for us. We also had Abby Lanes from the Neighborhood Ambassador Program for the off-campus renters, and went over some of the stuff that we're dealing with, with that. And then we had the principals from Washington Middle School, Sentinel High School, and they gave us kind of an overview of what's going on with the buildings there and how they're progressing, and it sounds like it's going to be really nice, as a matter of fact. John Wilkins came, and so did Mr. DeBary, and they talked to us about some information. We, we elected seven members, one being me, and Colleen Beal, Jean Peterson, Ken Kohlsopf, Dave Westfall, and Jerry Dinnenberger, and Cheryl Weintraut. And then we did an exercise in what we felt was important for our neighborhood. The one that generated the most votes was lack of painted crosswalks, and especially with the water park being so close and kids crossing back and forth across the street, plus bankroll ponds. And we're having problems with people slowing down enough for people to cross the streets, and with the animals going back and forth, ducks included, and geese walk the sidewalks and join the neighborhoods. The other one was the maintenance at the duck barn. So we'd like to see it mowed more, especially after this summer, not the whole thing because the geese bring the babies up and the babies feed on the grass and stuff like that, and there's a lot of deadfall in there that I think needs to be addressed that has come down from some of the windstorms we've had with the changing weather patterns we're experiencing right now. And speeding, that was the third one. And the fourth one was that drinking in the duck pond area. A lot of kids frequent that area, and there's some gentlemen that like to go over there, and they take a bottle with them or a six-pack, and they just sit there until it's gone. And it really concerns me, as a grandmother and a mother, that children are over there and you've got somebody drinking. So I, we have some ideas that we want to kick around and see if we can come up with some plans. The least voted on ones were urban deer, dogs off-leash, calming circles for traffic, and the sidewalks not being shoveled by the ponds. The neighborhoods are doing pretty good on their shoveling. It's just that pond area that isn't getting shoveled. So, other than that, there you go. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ms. Connor. And the Heart of Missoula, Ms. Farrell.
Hi, I'm Laurel Farrell, the Heart of Missoula. We had a general meeting on September 6th, and we had slightly more people than Yellowjackets. We elected a full leadership council of seven members, and we're really excited to get started. We'll be meeting October 3rd, and we'll be including the Parking Commissioner in our meeting, as that's one of our top two concerns in the neighborhood, specifically parking for residents who do not have off-street parking available. Our second concern was our burgeoning homeless population, and we look forward to hopefully working with the city and solving that problem. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. And last but not least, the Northside/Westside Neighborhood Council. Ms. Miller.
I'm Crystal Miller with the Northside/Westside Neighborhood Meeting was on August 30th, and it went really well. We had about 50 enthusiastic attendees, great food, and can't go wrong with Mountain Dew. It's a good beverage. Crime prevention material was handed out, and presentations were given. Sorry. Presentations were giving, given on Invest Health Project and CDBG and Lowell School Clinic, of which Mark Thane provided a tour availability. Voting on priorities which were to improve handicap access and fix elevator on pedestrian bridge, got 19 votes. Two north neighborhood greenways got 18 votes. Got improved bicycle pedestrian access in the neighborhood. Add more boulevard trees. Increase mountain line frequency and span of service. Optimize light at Tool and Broadway for pedestrian traffic are the main ones that we went over. We had four City Council members oblige us with their time for question and answers, and we appreciated that very much, and we gained four members to our leadership team.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And we have no more council reports. We do have a report from Mr. Bickel this evening talking about this budget issue, which we've been trying to sort through.
Hello, Dale Bickel, City's Chief Administrative Officer. Wanted to take the opportunity to talk about the, the change in the budget resolution that was talked about in public comment tonight, and we received some phone calls in the mayor's office today. You see in, in the package tonight, there's a referral to, to discuss this at BCal on Wednesday, the, a correction in the, the resolution, and I just want to talk a little bit about what happened and what's necessary to do this. So essentially, you know, what we're doing is amending the resolution, and I want, and we're not amending the budget. And the resolution that the council adopted inadvertently excluded a couple of items, and in fact, there's three areas that we discovered errors on that we need to correct. And so we're bringing that back to you on Wednesday to discuss. But those three, those three areas are, one, the big one was that in the water utility, the interest expense on the, on the debt service was left out. We talked about it during the budget, it hasn't been included in all the materials. It just, that number didn't get into the resolution. Second part is, is that there are some of the items that were approved by council, after the changes to the administration's budget after that, need to get in, put in properly. And then finally, and it's a big one, it's about $18 million, was that in the projected end-of-year fund balance numbers, when the resolution was originally brought, it had inadvertently left out items related to the fund balance, related to the utilities and the component units. The utilities, I mean, the water utility, wastewater, stormwater, and the component units being Parking Commission, MRA. Those were, those were understated, our, our fund balance numbers. We need to add those back in. I want to stress that it's not changing any of the parameters that were discussed related to the, the actual budget documents that we discovered, that the, that the council discussed and approved. It doesn't change the levy calculations or any of those items, and will, and be with finance staff on Wednesday at BCal to discuss the specifics of the changes, and council can consider that resolution that would, that would change the original budget resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Bickel. With that, we will move on to special presentations. We have a number of those this evening. First, ladies and gentlemen, whereas motor vehicle crashes are a leading cause of death for children 1 to 13 years old, but many of these deaths can be prevented by proper use of car seats, booster seats, and seat belts, and whereas drivers who buckle up are more likely to have child passengers who buckle up, and whereas correct installation and use of car seats, booster seats, and seat belts can be challenging, and getting safety information to parents and caregivers is crucial to saving young lives, and whereas the Missoula City County Health Department will have more information and car seat safety checks this Saturday at a Carousel for Missoula in Caris Park from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., and whereas the city of Missoula is proud to partner up with Buckle Up Montana and the Missoula City County Health Department to promote wearing seat belts every trip, every time, for everyone. Now therefore, I, John Engen, Mayor of the city of Missoula in the state of Montana, hereby recognize Monday, September 18th, 2017 as Buckle Up Missoula Day, and the week of September 18th through 23rd, 2017 as Child Passenger Safety Week in Missoula. We've got a couple of folks who'd like to speak to this proclamation this evening. Ms. Hutchinson.
Good evening. My name is Lonnie Hutchinson, and I am the Buckle Up Montana Coordinator for Missoula Granite County, and I thank you for this proclamation. This is a very exciting week for us. Children are indeed our most precious cargo, and we appreciate you declaring that this is Buckle Up Missoula Day and Child Passenger Safety Week. We have a number of activities happening across the state and across the nation that happens this time every year, and I just want to say that I'm about to get my 35-year pin working with the county, and I started in this work 35 years ago. And when we began our, our reach out to the community to get seatbelt usage increased, we had 13% usage. Today, we have Today, we have about 78% seatbelt usage within the Missoula urban area. And a lot of that credit goes to Mike Halligan, who is here with us this evening, as Senator Mike Halligan was able to get Montana's seatbelt law passed back in 1987. Mike, would you please stand? Because of him, we have saved so many lives, because people, it just makes, it just is obvious, when you go from 13% usage to 78% usage. It has been actually higher, it was at 84% at one point in time, but we are seeing a lot of lives saved because of that, and we really owe a great deal of gratitude to him. I'd like to introduce Kira. Kira Huck, she is co-coordinator for Save Kids Missoula. Kira?
Hi, I'm the co-coordinator of Save Kids Missoula, and we are proud partners of the Missoula Granite County Buckle Up Coalition, and I want to thank you guys for recognizing the importance of this day. We work to protect children from preventable injury, and vehicle crashes are the leading cause of death for children in the United States. We really want to encourage parents to come out and get their car seats checked, and make sure that their children are being transported safely.
And I'd just like to have Trooper Templeton speak on behalf of what he sees out there on the highway and the difference that seatbelts make.
I just thought you had Trooper Protection with you tonight, Lonnie.
Yeah, Trooper Templeton, like you said, we see a lot. I tell people on traffic stop earlier tonight, I wrote a seatbelt ticket, and I told them, we respond to crashes on a daily basis, and a crash scene is too late to remind people to buckle up. Usually people say, I normally wear it. Today, I was just in a hurry. Whatever the reason is, it does make a big difference. I tell them, it's not just a billboard slogan, this is a real deal, so I appreciate the proclamation here and the recognition for that, and we'll continue to work to keep people safe out there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Halligan, did you have anything you'd like to add? Once a senator, always a senator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and honorable members of the city council. I had not planned on saying anything, but when the seatbelt law was going through, it created probably one of the widest and most diverse coalitions of every diverse association and individual and member of the public that came in and supported that bill. And it was still controversial, it passed, it was challenged a couple of years later, taken to a vote of the people, and the vote of the people then passed it by 62 to 65% of the vote. And so, it's something that is as nonpartisan as you can possibly get, and something that is so focused on public safety and saving lives that it's worth every bit of energy that we can put into it. So, thank you for considering it.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks for coming down, thanks for your good work. Our second proclamation this evening, ladies and gentlemen, whereas Missoula's first-ever community greenhouse gas emissions inventory identified the transportation sector as the number-one emitter of greenhouse gases, contributing 37% of Missoula's total emissions, or 333,986 metric tons per year; and whereas the City of Missoula is committed to reducing drive-alone commutes from 70.5% of all commute trips to only 34% by 2045, as stated in the 2016 Long Range Transportation Plan. To achieve this aggressive mode-split goal, the number of commuters biking, walking, and taking transit needs to increase threefold. And whereas Missoula in Motion is charged with the mission of increasing the use of sustainable transportation by educating and encouraging individuals to consider sustainable transportation options; and whereas Missoulians choose to travel using sustainable transportation modes, they reduce our collective carbon footprint, relieve congestion, save money, preserve our clean air, and improve individual and community health. Now therefore, I, John Engen, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the State of Montana, do hereby proclaim the 20th day of September 2017 as One Less Car Day. And I know there are a number of bicycle commuters around this table, so thank you for that. And our third proclamation this evening, whereas tribal peoples originally inhabited the area now known as the State of Montana, and whereas our city of Missoula is the Aboriginal territory of the Salish Land and Kalispel people, and whereas numerous American Indian tribes constitute the largest minority group residents in the State of Montana; and whereas we celebrate our commitment to respect and preserve the rich American Indian traditions and cultures; and whereas Governor Brian Schweitzer has proclaimed the Fourth Friday of September as American Indian Heritage Day, now therefore, I, John Engen, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the State of Montana, do hereby proclaim Friday, September 22nd, 2017, as American Indian Heritage Day in Missoula, and encourage citizens of Missoula to commemorate this day with appropriate programs and activities to learn more about the rich heritage of the American Indian tribes. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, I will pass this evening on communications from the mayor, we'll move on to general comments from council members. We'll begin this evening with Ms. Jones, Ms. Marler, Ms. Swainy.
Thank you for reading the proclamation regarding American Indian Heritage Day. Today, we had the theme of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics on campus, and we started off with a sunrise ceremony, and then had a lecture from one of our native chemists on campus. And then tomorrow, our theme is traditional ecological knowledge. We'll have tours of the Payne Family Native American Center, traditional ecological knowledge seminar, and then native plant stewardship and ethnobotany education table in the Native American Center garden. There will also be a traditional regalia exhibit in the Native American Center Bonney Heavy Renter Gathering Place Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Wednesday, the theme is social justice. We have Rock Your Mock and Wear Your Native Pride. There will also be tours of the Native American Center. Soup Wednesday will be hosted by Nalsa. There will be a traditional food demonstration at noon. From 1:00 until 3:00 on the Oval, the Confederated Salish Kootni Tribes Traveling People Center Museum will be set up with a number of exhibits and activities. At 4:30, there will be a film viewing and discussion of the film Awake: A Dream from Standing Rock in the Payne Native American Center. All day, there will be an exhibit for raising awareness about murdered and missing indigenous women. On Thursday, the theme is arts and humanities. There will be a Star Stories in our planetarium, Community Bingo in the evening, and then also a Native American Hoop Dancer at Lowell Elementary School. We will also host a native photography exhibit in the Bonney Heavy Renter Gathering Place. And then on Friday, American Indian Heritage Day, our theme is health and wellness. There will be Si Nation hosting hands-on science learning exhibit on the Oval. We will have a welcome address by the Native American Studies Department, and President Sheila Sterns will read the proclamation for American Indian Heritage Day on campus. We will have traditional games on the Oval following that, and then in the evening, there will be a book reading and signing by Dr. Rosalind Lepierre. Her book is Invisible Reality: Storytellers, Storytakers, and the Supernatural World of the Blackfeet, that will be located at Fact and Fiction. All of those events are free to the public, so I invite all of you to attend. Thank you, matzgeratz.
Ms. Kira?
On Wednesday, I, and I know a couple of other folks here at this table, are participating in the Walking School Bus, encouraging more folks to walk to school. Chief Charlo, Franklin, Russell, Hawthorne, and Lowell are all participating. I'll be waking up, well, I wake up pretty early now, but I'll be getting out of the house and walking kids to school at 7:30 on Wednesday morning to Franklin School, and I sure hope that I'm not walking by myself. So, if you know kids at one of those schools, please do encourage them to walk to school on that day. You can find information just by Googling Walking School Bus, Missoula. Thanks.
Mr. Wilkins. And Mr. Von Losberg.
Thanks. Annual Northside-Westside softball game this Thursday, first pitch at 7:00. Festivities start at 6:00, fundraiser for NMCDC. It may turn into a hockey game, but we'll see.
Mr. Hess. Mr. Dubarry.
I would just like to remind folks that this Thursday evening, September 21st, at 5:30 p.m. at the Doubletree, is our second community workshop for the Design Excellence Project, and we had excellent attendance. It was basically standing room only at our first community workshop, and I'm hopeful that a large group of folks who are interested in design and urban form will be interested this time and come and visit and take part in workshop number two. Again, that's at 5:30 at the Doubletree.
Ms. West.
So, I was also going to promote the Walking School Bus and the Northside-Westside softball team, but if anybody, I have route to going to Lowell, so if anybody wants to walk with me Wednesday at 7:30, we start at Dickens and Pullman, and then walk along Scott Street on the way to Lowell, so I hope I'm also not walking alone, so thanks. At least I'll have two kids with me, I'll make my own walk, so.
Ms. Armstrong. All right, we'll move on to committee reports. Items listed here weren't approved unanimously in council committees, and the chair of that standing committee will make a motion reflecting that committee's actions, and will invite comment on these items. And our first committee report this evening happens in Parks and Recreation. Mr. Von Losberg.
Thanks, and it would be appropriate to invite the urban forester up. He's in attendance for some questions potentially. Start with the motion.
Start with the motion, please.
I recommend we approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract agreement with Treasure State Tree Service for removal of 62 public boulevard trees in the total amount of $47,088.60.
And that motion is in order? Discussion on the motion? Mr. Von Losberg?
If I could have the urban forester come up, I'd like to confirm a few things that did not get covered in committee, and it's possible other committee members will have questions. So, a couple of the concerns that I think are worth highlighting to the public, and would be good for you to confirm, Mr. Boza. One, there are four properties in this contract that have multiple tree removals, I think between three and four. I know there was a concern that those properties were perhaps getting clear-cut. It's my understanding from the supplemental information that was provided, that those properties have anywhere from eight to nine trees, and so we're not facing that kind of a situation with each of those properties. Is that correct?
Correct. The trees in question are corners, with the exception of the Southwest Higgins, that is a string of trees that are underneath the power lines that have died back significantly. So, the other three locations, the one on McLeod, the one on Sixth Street, and then the one on Plymouth, those are all corner locations.
A few other things to confirm. Notification is really important when we're doing this. There was some confusion. I know from prior experience with my former colleague, Jason Weiner, we spoke with you a couple of years ago about the cases where trees were being removed that tended to straddle perhaps a property line, and there might be confusion about whose property that was on. And the result of the discussion that Jason and I had with you and staff was a change in the notification process by which, in addition to the certified letter that goes to the owner, door hangers are added to, again, the actual physical property where the tree is, and the adjacent two property owners on either side, if it's a situation like that. Is that correct?
That is correct. So, after those meetings in late 2015, we switched our SOP, and so our operating procedure, so we do the door hanger, and it goes to the address where the tree is physically located, and regardless of whether it's on, you know, straddles the property line, we still notify those property owners. We put the door hanger out a minimum of 48 hours in advance of the tree removal.
And the last thing, last two things, I guess a couple together, in terms of that notification, another, I believe, sort of edit we made at that point was to make more explicit reference to the appeal process that the homeowner is entitled to if they'd like to challenge the decision about the removal, and more explicit reference to the process about the tree being replaced. And I believe this is an area where we can continue to improve it, but I saw in the material that was provided, that I believe there's sort of three areas there where you specify what can happen with the homeowner about replacement. Is that correct?
Correct. Again, following the meetings in late 2015, staff worked internally to develop a new notification letter. The notification letter that had been used previous to that was very bureaucratic, it cited code. The new letter indicates what tree was in question, it indicated what we had done in the review process. It does indicate the appeal process, which is in 1232 of the code. And then it identifies the three options that property owners have to seek a replacement tree for the tree that was taken down, and if there are multiple trees that are taken down, multiple replacement trees. The first being that if the property owner does not wish to wait for that process to unfold, they always have the option to obtain a no-fee permit, and that no-fee permit is obtained through the Parks Department, and that property owner can then purchase and plant the trees at their own expense. The second option is to participate in the cost-share program, and that cost-share program is $200 per tree, and that provides an opportunity for those folks to move to the head of the line. And then the third is to request a replacement tree, and at that particular time, that request is put into our queue. Each year, we review that list, we go out to all the sites to determine if it's a suitable site for replacement, and if it is, then we put that tree onto the list. And so, if it is not a suitable location, say for instance, that property owner does not water the boulevard, then we work with that property owner to obtain some type of an agreement that they will water the tree. Otherwise, we take that location off the list. If they agree to water the trees, then we keep it on the list.
Further questions? Mr. Wilkins?
So, as the Engen Committee, you were asked if you could give us a copy of the door hanger and the letter? Some of us wanted to see that. Was that provided, and I just missed it, or?
Yes, that was put into the sire package.
Okay.
Further questions? Ms. Marler?
Hypothetical, I got all the information that you provided, thanks for that hypothetical question. If there's an arborist who's out on the job, and they have a, like, they feel like a tree could be saved, which I saw a lot of the trees, and I know some of the trees that are on this list, and they're, I don't think anyone would say that they could be saved, the ones that were the examples. But if somebody was a certified arborist and was out on the job and had a different opinion of if the tree needed to come down at that time, what would happen at that point?
In that particular case, they have the ability to contact our office, and we put a stop to whatever work was scheduled for that particular tree, and we do another review. So, it's an opportunity for folks to, you know, other folks in the urban forestry community and the arborist committee, or community, to do a review.
Okay. I have some comments, but not, I feel like we're in the question portion, so I'll stop here.
Any more questions for Mr. Boza? All right. Thank you, Mr. Boza. With that, discussion on the motion. Ms. Marler?
Mr. Von Losberg summarized the concerns from committee really well, and we did get a lot of information attached to the agenda, and I am going to vote in support of this going forward tonight. I don't see any point in holding it back. I do have just some comments about our, the very serious situation that our urban forest is in. The trees, especially in the university district, are going to start dying off at an even more noticeable rate, and some of those, I mean, those trees are dead, and they do need to come out, but I can't emphasize enough the importance of us continuing, we can always improve our communication materials, and because there's not an unlimited amount of money to replant all the trees, as this high number of trees are dying off, we really need to be cultivating partnerships and buy-in with the homeowners and residents to fund their own their own replacement trees. So, as much as we can do that, I guess not just in the U District, but throughout town, the better. And I think that the best way to start that relationship is with these notification letters and door hangers, to continue to try to make the language more collaborative and open-door. I still feel, I understand that the letter is way better than it used to be, and I appreciate the work that went into that, and I appreciate that we now have expanded the notification to people that live on both sides of the tree. But if that's, you know, the first time you're hearing about your tree coming out is in a somewhat bureaucratic letter that, you know, cites the code to you, it doesn't make you feel like spending $500 or $400 on a tree, and I just want us to do whatever we can as city council members and park staff and every, the contractors, everyone involved to just try to impress on people that this is really important, and there's not a lot of appetite for raising taxes for a lot of things right now, but those, it's going to be very dramatic in about 10 years when more and more of those trees are dead. So, we have to start being creative about getting more trees in the ground. And thank you for providing all the information, and I hope that it's something we can keep talking about. I feel like this is one thing, I'm talking about it a lot because I feel like it's something that I wish I had been able to make more progress with during my time on council, but oh, the day will come when the trees start falling. No, I'm just kidding. It's going to be severe. People, it's happening in slow motion, but it's, we've got to start planting more trees. Thank you.
Further discussion? Ms. West?
I'm also going to vote in support of this. I didn't support it in committee. I really, really appreciate having the visuals of maps to go along with this, and I hope that in the future we can have a more complete package than just the tree list. Yeah, so, and I also hope that we can have a broader policy decision or discussion that maybe involves some way of coupling replanting trees to removals in some sort of a way.
Further discussion? Seeing none, anyone in the audience care to comment on the contract? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the motion to approve the contract, Kears. Kears votes yes. Debary. Debary votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Marler. Marler votes yes. Swainy. Swainy votes yes. Von Laesberg. Von Laesberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. Wilkins. Wilkins votes yes. And Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 10 ayes and 2 absents.
And the contract is approved. Mr. Von Laesberg?
This is a long one. Bear with me. I move we adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 12, 44 Missoula Municipal Code entitled Cemeteries, changing the name of the chapter to Missoula City Cemetery, changing the name of Article 1 from Cemetery to Missoula City Cemetery, general provisions, changing the name of Article 2 from Cemetery Board of Trustees to Missoula City Cemetery Board of Trustees, changing the name of Article 3 from Cemetery Director to Missoula City Cemetery Director, proposing new cemetery services, reinstating past cemetery services, and generally amending the chapter to update language as well as the laws and rules governing the Missoula City Cemetery. Monument sales have been removed from the most recent draft of the ordinance, and the companion resolution motion is adopt the resolution generally amending Missoula City Cemetery fees by adding a new public service, by adding new public service fees, setting fees for the reinstatement of past public services, and generally amending current fees as proposed by Missoula City Cemetery and Missoula City Cemetery Board of Trustees. And again, monument sales have been removed from Exhibit A.
And those motions are in order? Discussion on the motions? Mr. Von Laesberg?
Thanks. I briefly just want to say I was supportive of the pair of motions. We've had this in committee several times. I think it strikes a balance. I asked for the explicit language to be included in the motions noting that the monument sales have been struck from those. I want to mention and call out my appreciation for the City Cemetery Board who oversees the cemetery. These volunteers, as in many other cases around the city with other entities devote their time to oversee the operations. They are and have been responding to requests for services and concerns at the cemetery, and I think their actions have been entirely consistent with that. And as I started out saying, I think this represents a compromise that makes sense. The most important thing having to do with the cemetery is the quality of the operations. There are a host of other attendant sort of issues, whether or not private business can do well supporting operations. We have numerous cases of this throughout the city. Roadwork is one of the obvious ones that comes to mind, where we are sometimes able to do work in-house, and we sometimes contract services out. We strike, we work to strike a balance of efficiency and cost considerations when we do that. So, as I said, I think this represents an appropriate balance with an eye toward maintaining quality operations at the cemetery, and I'm going to support it.
Further discussion? Ms. Jones?
I'm in support of the motion tonight. I've been in all of the committee meetings. There's been extensive discussion, and I can certainly understand the arguments, pro and con. I think, as Brian said, we have struck the balance here, and the way I see it, historically, this city cemetery was created just as many other municipalities created their city cemetery. It's here, it's not going away. We, as city council, need to make sure that it runs as efficiently as possible and it provides a service to the community, and we balance that with the private entities that are out there. So, I appreciate the voices that have been heard on this, but I also do feel like this, the bottom line is this is a service to the public, and that's how we view it. So, I'm happy to vote in support of this tonight, and thanks, Brian, for all of your work on this, and to the City Cemetery Board.
Ms. Murray?
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the committee meeting on this issue last Wednesday, but I was able to watch a chunk of it online, and I just wanted to say that I appreciated the discussion that my colleagues had, and I appreciated all of the input from the public and the work that the Cemetery Board has put into this, and I think that we've reached a reasonable compromise, and I think what we've done here on council and with input from folks in the community, it serves as perhaps a starting place to think a little bit more strategically about how the cemetery operates and the service that it provides in the community, and frankly, the service that it provides to the businesses in the community that use the cemetery. So, I think we've come to a good place, and I'm looking forward to supporting this motion.
Further discussion? Mr. Wilkins?
So, I'm going to support this too. I have a little bit of a heart flutter on the liner service, the difference between what the cemetery charges and what the other ones charge is really quite a large distance between. So, I hope somewhere we can work that out. We do subsidize the cemetery, so I'd like to see the liners go up a little bit, might help in our subsidies.
Ms. Kears?
I'm voting no, like I did on Wednesday, because of the change that allows only the cemetery to set monuments. I'm not convinced this change is needed, and to me, it feels like we're legislating personalities. We heard earlier that 189 monuments were placed by the private sector from fiscal year 14 through fiscal year 17, and that of those almost 200, about 35 were found to have some issue, whether that be something small, like debris left on site, to more serious problems like an unlevel monument or one encroaching onto another grave. During that time, the average days from violation to correction improved, and I think would continue to do so. So, for these reasons, I'm not convinced that that particular change is needed and will be voting no.
Ms. Marler?
Appreciated the many discussions we've had about this. I think that we tried to do, tried to have a good compromise. I was disappointed, well, I'm really happy that we clarified about whether or not there's going to be city sales of monument stones, and I'm glad that that is not happening. I was hoping that in committee last week, we'd be able to come to more of a compromise about the headstone setting, that perhaps the cemetery staff could do the foundation, and then the monument shops could put their own headstones, but it didn't seem like that compromise went anywhere, and I was, I'm actually a little bit confused. I'm confused. The voice, anyhow, I got distracted. I'm not clear on whether now only the cemetery does the settings, it can't be the private I'm disappointed that we were not able to get that compromise. I would support if somebody made an amendment. I mean, I think we tried that route in committee, and there just weren't the votes to do it, so I'm not sure it's worth trying to do it now. I would also like to say, for the record, I do appreciate the Cemetery Board, I do appreciate the private shops in town, and I'm a customer through my job at one of them for some monument stones on a project. I know that everybody feels really passionate about the work that's happening. Again, I wish there could be a little bit more compromise, and I hope, and I even said to one gentleman from the Chamber of Commerce, that in a less loaded situation than a city council meeting, maybe there could be some discussion amongst all the parties, because it's clear that there's some history and some hard feelings there, and we can't, unfortunately, we can't take all that away in just a meeting. So, thank you, and I'm going to be voting in support.
Mr. Wilkins?
So, I did put an amendment on the floor during the committee meetings, and I think it was rejected by both parties to have one do the base and the other one set the monuments, so I, both parties. So, you know, not everything is good in this ordinance, but I think it's time to move on, so I'm still in favor of it.
Ms. Armstrong?
Like Ms. Marler, I was disappointed with the everything-or-nothing attitude by some of the parties, and I would have liked to, I am, I'm glad that we are not selling monuments. I think it's important for the businesses to do that. I would have liked to have seen a compromise where the customer gets to choose who sets their monument, and the customer gets to decide, maybe on the vault sales, but I think that the lower-cost vault is a pass-through straight to the customer, and let's face it, we subsidize the cemetery. We've been doing it for years, we're going to continue doing it, we're not in it to make money, and I would prefer the customer get the better deal, so I will be supporting this. But like Ms. Marler said, I would have preferred that maybe we came to a compromise in some of the other services, and I do believe this is a starting point that we, it's malleable going forward over the next few years.
Further discussion? Ms. Hess?
I agree with a lot of the comments raised, but I think one of the issues with the monument setting was that there were new facts introduced on Wednesday, and one of those to me was the material that the, for the foundation, granite foundation versus a concrete foundation. And in a discussion that's been going on for several months, we, it was just impractical, I guess, to make a compromise that, a compromise that neither party was interested in, and I would absolutely welcome future, you know, additional discussion on that topic, but I don't think we're going to get there now, and I think we've done a good job on this ordinance to date, and if the parties can continue to work on that, I think we can continue to strengthen it in the future.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, anyone in the audience care to comment?
I'm Rachel Parkin. I'm an attorney with Myla Dragovichdale &amp; Steinbrenner, and I represent Garden City Monument Services and Garden City Funeral and Crimatory. I'd like to first commend the Cemetery Board and Mr. Reagan on an excellent job with Chories &amp; Stones this past weekend. It was really well-executed and a great event. And I'd also like to thank the Board for listening to the public and dropping their intent to sell monuments. So, I think that that's a good result, and we appreciate working with them on that. I do want to address briefly, and then I will turn it over to my clients to address in a little bit more detail, just two remaining concerns with the ordinance as proposed. The first is the mandate that the foundation be set by the cemetery. I think that this removes control over a very important aspect of a product that my clients are providing. As Mr. Hess suggested, some of the shops prefer to set their monuments in granite. That's not something that the city is prepared or willing to do. And moreover, there's not been a history of the city setting these monuments. So, I think 2002 was when the monument shops took over doing this, so for many years, they've been doing it, they've had that control, and even prior to 2002, and again, I'll let my client speak to this a little bit more, the cemetery, my understanding is, was not actually setting large monuments. They were doing smaller wet sets and not the kind of setting that they're proposing to do now. Again, I'll let my client speak to that a little bit more. Finally, the last objection we have to the ordinance is the price for the cemetery liners. As you guys all know, it seriously undercuts the market rate, it undercuts the private industry and what it sells for through my clients. I think this is a huge problem, mostly because it doesn't seem like good business to undercut local business and then ask the taxpayers to cover that difference, to subsidize that difference. This is particularly true in this instance, where the proposal to sell monuments was proposed as a way to bring in more revenue to pay for cemetery services. If the cemetery needs more revenue, the cemetery shouldn't be cutting prices and then asking the taxpayers to subsidize it. And with that, I'll turn it over to my clients. Thanks.
Bob Jordan from Garden City Monument Services again. Prior to 2002, as Rachel was mentioning there, and at least back to 1971, when about the time when Mary Lou Cordis there and myself, she started for the Cemetery Board there, and I started for the Monument Company. Jess and Maxine Price at that time were the superintendents of the cemetery, and Dennis Ensel was one of the employees out there. He had poured the foundations at the Missoula City Cemetery, the smaller, flat ones, that we dropped off to them, and he set those in wet set into the concrete pads. He also did the pads for the larger upright monuments, from pillow size on up, and the Monument Company, we, we've installed them ourselves. They did not handle any of the, the cemetery ever, never did handle any of the bigger upright ones there from any of the monument companies. After Dennis retired and several different cemetery sections were on board, the monument companies were in charge of all the setting foundations and delivery, as the board there did not want any of the responsibility, liabilities, time, or anything there to do any of this here. It required extra manpower and everything for them that they did not have at that time, and the liability, they did not want that responsibility. So, we again stayed on board and handled everything there pretty much throughout all the, from all the cemeteries. Fees that were charged were, back when, back in 71 there, fees were really, really low and stuff for the concrete work and everything that they did, and now we provide a permit fee and a marking-out fee that we paid to the cemetery and still do the work ourselves and everything there. So, appreciate it again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And thank the cemetery for a wonderful job they do.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this evening?
My name is Michelle Jordan, and I'm the other part of Garden City Monuments. And one of the things, listening to the functions and the conversations that have gone on, I've noticed that it hasn't been brought out, that when a customer comes in and they order a stone, there's a process that we have to deal with with Missoula City. We first have to ask them if, what the family is asking, if it is allowed there. Then they tell me yes or no. Then we proceed forward. Then we have to send a permit and the money with it. Then we have to send a permit and the money with it, and they go out and mark the stone. So we go out and place it, and I think there was some pictures sent of some of the last 12 monuments that we've done. And a lot of them are the big, all-polished pieces. For the cemetery to handle those and them being responsible, that responsibility passes on to the people, where we carry a $2 million policy to go into the cemetery, and if something happens while we're setting a family stone, that is our responsibility. It is out of our pocket, not the people's pocket. So if, and, they have to go off and sign off on the project when we're completed. Were there some problems in the past and not done in a timely fashion? Possibly. But we have cleared that all up. We're trying to stay on task of it, and at this point, there are no problems that we are responsible for. So I think that that should be taken in consideration, and Michelle was speaking of it, that it would be beneficial to the taxpayer, that we be responsible for our own stones. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Mr. Evans.
My name is Susie Helms. I'm the sexton at Sunset Cemetery. I've been there a total of 20 years. My employer is Rick Evans, formerly John Miletta, if you remember him. My position there is a labor of love as well as a job. I love the cemetery. I always have. I have a passion for it, passion for the families we serve, great sympathy for the losses incurred. I have the best interests of City Cemetery in mind, because I also have loved ones there, and I will have future family members there. My grounds crew has set stones at City Cemetery for some time, as Garden City Monument has. I'm not sure why City Cemetery stopped setting stones years ago. I don't know if it was injuries, which can happen. Front page of the Missoulian picture showed that could happen. Damaged stones or inadequate equipment, I don't know that reason. Whatever reason, we have continued to do installations for the city as stones from coming out of the area. People bring stones out of the area. City Cemetery refers them to us, or Garden City Monument to set, and we have done that to serve the families. With the proposal before you with City Cemetery, one of my concerns is the granite foundations. I understand that only concrete will be allowed. A lot of families like the granite foundation. Concrete can degrade over time. I have a curb at front of my house that proves that. Families should have that choice. Also, the proposed price adjustments are concerning to me. I've had families ask me for years what this $180 permit fee was for City. In loyalty to City, I said, well, you know, they have to stake the location, they have to go through the records. But record-keeping is a daily operation at cemeteries. This isn't an extra expense. This is a daily operation, of which I can't understand why there would be a charge. But in conjunction with that, now that City is proposing to set these stones, the $180 charge is now going down to 100. So what constitutes that $80 fee going, you know, less fee? I don't understand that. You know, our previous family's going to get a refund of that $80? I don't know. I also have the same question as a private citizen for the proposed liner sales. No one wants to raise prices. It's inevitable. Operating costs have to be offset by revenues. You can only survive so long being in the red. I can't believe that these lower prices are going to be subsidized by setting, setting these stones. I can't understand that, especially if you have damages. We have an experienced crew. Garden City Monument is an experienced monument installer. Damages happen, and we cover them. Since January 1st of this year, Sunset has paid $1,942 in replacement damages. That doesn't include the extra labor costs involved. At the last committee meeting, a committee member stated that the City Cemetery is not in the business to make money. As a taxpayer, I certainly agree with that. However, as a government-administered business, you have a fiscal responsibility and duty to ensure proper management of that business. Why should property owners have higher taxes because these fees are being lowered that won't cover the operating? With the proposed changes, I suspect these same issues will be back on the table in a year, when this shows that City has, City Cemetery has lost even more money. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Helms. Mr. Evans.
Rick Evans, owner of Garden City Funeral Home and Sunset Memorial Cemetery. Susie just kind of summed up what I was going to say. I have a problem with the City Cemetery lowering the price of the liners, for one thing. It doesn't just affect my cemetery. It affects St. Mary's Cemetery, which, by the way, is not tax-based, and it also affects the Montana Veterans Cemetery. So all of our cemeteries are going to be affected by this. If we're going to lower the price of the liners, then let the private sector come in and sell them. Right now, City Cemetery will not allow a private sector to sell the liner. They will a vault, but not a liner. So if they're going to lower the price, at least let us recoup some of the expenses, that we're going to have to lower all our prices, and at least let us sell liners at Missoula Cemetery. If, if the council is so worried about helping a family, I'll tell you one spot in the, in the prices that they are charging, and that is, excuse me, a second interment fee that they charge a family. They're the only cemetery in town doing this, by the way. A second interment fee for a family that comes in and has their loved one buried maybe in 1970, and their mother dies, and they want to come back in and rebury their mother in the same grave, which you can do. You can have a casket in a grave and a cremation, or two cremations. City Cemetery now charges an extra $400 for a second interment right, which is, to me, it's a gouge. All the other cemeteries, we don't do it. But, so if you're going to help the families at a grieving time, there would be a place you could lower, lower your price, but not the other way. So, that's all I have. I appreciate you folks for listening to us. I kind of learned a lot by coming to these meetings. And I also want to thank the board. I was on the Cemetery Board for a number of years, and after I bought Sunset, I had to, you know, recluse myself from it. We didn't have these problems. When I was on the board, monument companies, there were no problems. So I ask you to really look at what we're approving tonight. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Anyone else this evening? Mr. Ramos?
Jesse Ramos, Whittaker Drive, Missoula Citizen. While this compromise is better than it was before, it is still entirely unnecessary that the city is even involved in the first place. In the financial services business, we have a massive compliance department, and insurance that ensures that representatives follow specific guidelines. If they do not, if they do not follow these guidelines, the compliance department assesses fines and penalties. What they don't do is they don't go out as a whole and go to college and take a bunch of exams and begin selling retirement funds. Why don't they? Because it's not their job to do so, nor is it the job of the city to compete with small monument and funeral home companies. Your role is to regulate, and I urge you to do just that. And I urge you to do a better job of that. And what about free-market choices? Why is the city creating its own monopoly that is completely inexperienced in the, in the field that it's doing? And why aren't you listening to the experts when they say concrete doesn't work as good as granite? And why are you not allowing the customer to decide? Why are you deciding that for the customer? And if there's all these doubts amongst the council members, I know that several of you guys have mentioned that, well, we kind of like this, but we, it could be better, and we're going to support it. But if all you guys would just get together and vote this down, I encourage you to please do so, and you can come up with a better resolution to this. You can come up with better ways to supervise and assess fees and penalties, and I respect the courage of Ms. Keres, and I hope that you can all follow her in some of that. And please just vote no if you have any hesitation on it. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Any further discussion? Ms. Keres?
I had this question last week, and now like six people have talked about it, this cement or granite question. On page 16, Section 12.44, Point 170, Section 8, Item 12, it says that foundations must be cement or granite. No aggregate or dye foundations allowed. And so, it's my impression that a granite foundation would be allowed. And I guess I would like to ask for confirmation, because I see some nodding, but just to get it on the record, could you come up and say whether or not a granite foundation would be allowed?
Mr. Reagan?
Ron Reagan, Missoula Cemetery Director. Yes, you're correct. At 1244, 170, concrete or granite. So if they want to upsell to a granite foundation, they can, and we accept it, we'll install it.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote on the ordinance and resolution.
On the ordinance and resolution, Debary. Debary votes yes. Hess, Hess votes yes. Jones, Jones votes yes. Marler, Marler votes yes. Swainy, Swainy votes no. No. And Von Lausberg? Von Lausberg votes yes. West, West votes yes. Wilkins?
Yes.
Wilkins votes yes. Armstrong? Armstrong votes no. Keres? Keres votes no. Would anybody like to change your vote?
I, I'll change my vote to no.
Okay, Marler changes her vote to no.
I'll change my vote to no, too.
Wilkins is changing his vote to no. Now we have five ayes, five nays, and two absent.
And the motion will be approved. All vote aye. Okay. We have no additional committee reports this evening. We have no new business. Are there any additional items to be referred? Seeing none, any miscellaneous communications, petitions, reports, or announcements? Seeing none of those, as always, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for your service. We will be adjourned.